Welcome councillor staff, media and the public to this meeting of the Dunedin City Council. We'll begin as we usually do with prayer and our prayer today will be offered by Ms Tunazina Ikwe of the Bahai community. Welcome.
Thank you so much for introducing me and it's an honour to be here. O divine providence, this assemblage is composed of thy friends who are attracted to thy beauty and are set ablaze by the fire of thy love. Turn these souls into heavenly angels, resuscitate them through the breath of thy holy spirit. Grant them eloquent tongues and resolute hearts. Bestow upon them heavenly power and merciful susceptibilities. Cause them to become the promulgators of the oneness of mankind and the cause of love and concord in the world of humanity. So that the perilous darkness of ignorant prejudice may vanish through the light of the sun of truth. This dreary world may become illumined. This material realm may absorb the rays of the world of spirit. These different colours may merge into one colour and the melody of praise may rise to the kingdom of thy sanctity. Verily, thou art the omnipotent and the almighty.
Now move on to public forum. Speakers Angus Mackay and Wendy Harrocks who will be addressing us concerning the Harbour Side development.
Mayor Karl, councillors, hi, I'm Angus Mackay and this is Wendy Harrocks. Thank you for allowing us to present our submission to you regarding a city-to-sea bridge connection. I'm going to make a few suggestions which I hope you find constructive about the connection in relation to the Harbour Side development as a whole, while Wendy has some great ideas about the bridge connection itself. So we've been encouraged by discussions that we opened about a redevelopment Dunedin Harbour Side last year, thus maximising Dunedin's undoubted potential, focusing on the ever-growing tourism market, thus boosting our economy as other industries decline. In light of this and the definite plans to construct a Harbour Side cycleway, why is the bridge connection from town centre to the Harbour Side no longer a priority? Clearly gone nine in circles on this, it was in the OTT 2011 that was on the table. And a pedestrian bridge could revitalise the Queen's Gardens and Harbour Side areas, open up the city, bringing the Harbour Side into the city. A landmark structure could also become an attraction in itself, providing a missing link. We concur and believe a sea-city-bridge connection will benefit the Harbour Side development. The bridge is a vital component of the infrastructure needs of that area along with cycleway, lighting, eco-friendly green spaces, trees, thus encouraging property developers' investment in that area. Don't believe it's a huge investment by the DCC in terms of cost and effort for massive long-term returns that will, quoting Mayor Karl, transform the city. Private bests such as hotel, possibly five-star, that blends in with the cityscape this time. Apartments, cafes, bars, ORC headquarters, university aquarium will boost the construction industry first and then the tourism industry consequently. The city-sea connection will benefit the cycleway in terms of usage and the town centre. More people will have access to and from the city centre including visitors, residents and commuters. It will be like a dam bursting, opening up, you could argue, a somewhat congested claustrophobic town centre to the sea with its fresh air, pristine waters and fabulous views. What might be the confounding issues? I'm sure you're very concerned about cost. And again quoting the OTT 2000, I guess these costs have gone up but 1.5 million to 3.5 million was quoted then, which is considerable. I just wonder, has the council considered partnership funding for the bridge connection? Any of the following hotel, cafes, bars, apartments, property developers, ORC, they would all have a vested interest in this connection. You don't need to look back at the failed Chinese hotel project that they would have paid for the bridge themselves. I think indeed my partnerships would be considered for the whole Harbour Side infrastructure. I think all the above I mentioned would want to complete an appealing infrastructure in place, wouldn't they? Secondly, weather, I really don't think I have to talk much about this, you've lived here much longer than me. I see it as a non-issue but it does seem to crop up, so just to address it very quickly. An extract from Wikipedia which you can read, essentially although we're at the same latitude as mid-France, we do have irritating winds at times. Cool southerly prevailing wind and occasional northeastern. I've given you some readings about temperatures and rainfall elsewhere in New Zealand. And especially with the UK, you can see that we compare quite favourably or better than many cities that have gone ahead and transformed their Harbour Sides into attractive thriving places. Of course, if the weather is inclement then people can sit inside in a warm, cosy environment behind glass windows and cafes and bars and still enjoy the views. The all-round busy cafes at St Clair exposed to the sea elements provide evidence of that. I wonder, is it time for an integrated approach? Is it not time for a project manager and a select committee made up of the parties I mentioned, including town planners, maybe Naia Tahu, to reform, demonstrating commitment and intent as well as professional integrated approach to our Harbour Side redevelopment project? I ask you the question, what vision do you have for the Harbour Side? What visions do you have for a city-to-sea-bridge-connection? What might be your legacy? Perhaps imagine taking a stroll down there one day councillor Benson Park maybe, and a few of your colleagues to your favourite cafe or bar at the end of another hard day in the chambers. Gaze out at the Tyro ahead and someone converses with you. Who is behind this magnificent idea to which you reply humbly as all Kiwis do? That was need. I do envy you that you're in a position to make such a beneficial and long-lasting change to Dunedin's future complexion and attractiveness.
Hand over to Wendy.
As someone who's lived in Dunedin since 1993 having come from Auckland, I'm concerned that the redevelopment of the Harbour Side area continues to languish. Elsewhere in the country, for example New Plymouth, Taoranga, Auckland, Wellington, cities have redeveloped their waterfronts to the benefit of their residents and visitors. I realise that cost is major consideration as is the question of other priorities. Those are councils' concerns. I'm here simply to speak to the need for a bridge that will link the Steamer Basin to the Chinese Garden, Queen's Gardens area. Angus and I are not an organisation, he already had his time booked here. Happened to mention that he was going to be giving the submission, I shot my mouth off, next thing he'd take me in. What are the needs? The Steamer Basin is a waterside recreation area that needs to be accessible on foot or bicycle from the city. The Harbour Side footpaths and cycleways need a link to Queen's Gardens. The warehouse precinct is being developed and apartment residents will need access to the Steamer Basin for recreation. The waterfront has tourist potential that the city needs to develop. There are secondary issues, one is the wind problem in Queen's Gardens area that needs a solution. And the other is, one that's always brought up whenever the bridge comes up, the view of the harbour that was created by the first planner of the city that needs to be preserved. Bridges built between the Steamer Basin and the Chinese Garden. A possible model to emulate is Paramatchet's city-to-sea bridge in Wellington, which shows how successful and innovative approach to design can be. This bridge brings cultural heart to the transition from civic square to waterfront. The structure is designed in such a way that it breaks the wind with those crossing it, offers shelter and space to those who want to socialise on it and provides a contemporary art experience as well as views. Some ideas for Dunedin. The proposed bridge site is near the old canoe landing used by Maori if one ignores their reclamation. Therefore, is it possible for the council to develop a proposal for building a bridge in partnership with Naia Tahu, showing the significance of its location? Such a culturally significant development would balance the presence of the Chinese Garden on the waterfront with an acknowledgement of indigenous culture. The bridge need not be constructed in a straight line. Assuming that it would begin in the Chinese Garden car park, it could touch base on the northern end of the piece of land across the road from the custom house, that's the bit of land that was going to be used for the hotel. Then head for the car park in front of the Lone and Mercantile building. That way, it might be possible to preserve the view created by the original town planner looking between the bridges piles. And the bridge, by being not straight, would be its own windbreak for those crossing it. If the bridge touched down on the land mentioned across the road from the custom house, it would be possible for people who had crossed the railway bridge by the station to use it to get to the Steamer Basin. At the moment, they have to try and get across that incredibly busy road. The bridge should be wide enough to accommodate both pedestrians and cyclists. And I've got an odd idea for the land that was designated for the hotel. And it probably is completely financially not viable, but being ignorant as to its current ownership, I had long thought that it should be planted as an example of succession from native waterside plants to lowland forest and so provide shelter to the Queen's Gardens area as well as the basin. And it could be designed with a path and seating and an interpretation panel for visitors and maybe even a small playground for children and so add to the attractions of the Harbour Side. I've not discussed the suggestion that an underpass should be built instead of a bridge because in terms of personal safety, the thought of an underpass gives me the creeps.
Ikwe. Thank you, now Angus, Wendy, are you happy to take questions? Questions councillors, councillor Benson Park.
I'd like to stress that we don't know each other, do we, until now? Can I, you made it quite clear that you were talking about traversing both barriers, both the railway line and the highway in both directions. And thank you for the Wellington suggestion, but do you have any other ideas about driving this issue forward? For example, have you thought about being involved in making a similar submission as part of the city's annual plan process?
No, I did speak to Mayor Karl about submissions and suggested coming to this one and he thought that might be enough. If you don't mind hearing my voice again, I'll come back.
Further questions councillors? Are there more? Thank you very much for your submission. Thank you. Mr Brown. Next minute, welcome.
Your worship, the mayor and councillors, thank you for the opportunity to address you again on St Clair erosion. But this time in particular the sand sausages and the installation and the delay. You've made quite some progress, congratulations. Sand sausages will be an interim protection work, it's great, that's exactly what it will be. And I would also like to acknowledge your manager, Richard Saunders, who has made an attempt to keep me up to date with the information that's available. I've passed out to you and hopefully you've had a chance to read some brief notes and a few photos of today's presentation. I'll leave that with you, but I now just want to run through some existing photos and some new photos, pretty graphic. That photo that's on screen at the moment is where we were at the end of storms, September of last year. Shows the extent and the height of the erosion and the proximity to the houses and the raceway behind. The next photo, thanks Pam. That's the same area from an aerial shot showing again the extent of the erosion particularly at the top. Proximity of Victoria Road and the houses. Next shot please. Again, around about the same time and if we could zero in on that a bit, thanks Pam. And at the top, bring the top of the picture down a little. There we are, okay, just there, thanks. You can see where the ramp is installed for the surf club and just to the right as you look at the picture, what's left of the gravelled pathway. Below the gravelled pathway, there's a strip of vegetation and the remnants of the sand sausage. That again was the scenario in September last year. We'll see what it looks like in a moment, let's see with the next photo, thanks. There we are, about six days ago. You'll see that that strip of vegetation has all but gone. This is natural, non-storm erosion, partly caused by the general public, partly caused by wind and a little bit of wave action at the bottom. It just indicates quite dramatically how fragile that sand dune is in its present state. Thanks Pam, the next one. There it is again from a different angle and on the right-hand side, you can't quite see the toe of the sea, but notice that post. You've got the hurricane gate and a post, the last of the posts holding up the fence. We'll move on to the next slide. Can you see that post beginning to drift out to the right now, heading downhill? That was five days ago. This morning I went and had a look and that post now is being held up by the fence rather than the verse. There's nothing at the bottom of it, the sand's just gone. Next shot please. You can just about see the bottom of the post there, now it's free and waving in the breeze. And again, thanks. And we'll just run through these a little more, please. That shows the extent at the moment of the ocean beach domain between the beach itself and Victoria Road, effectively a triangle. But the narrowest part of the triangle is where the most serious erosion is and it's where the residential houses are. That puts it in pretty blank perspective. And one more, thanks Pam. That shows the extent of high tide three days ago. As you can see, it's right at the foot of the area that I showed you in relation to the path and the post, it's right there. We haven't had any storms yet. Next shot please. Again, as you can see, it's creating its own steep face. Put a storm or a decent surge on top of that and you really don't even need to use your imagination as to what will happen over a 24-hour period. And one more, thanks Pam. Same shot showing the spray this time bouncing right up the face of the sand. Now the next three shots, I've had marked up and there's some of the shots from September showing the extent of the erosion that I've just discussed. That's what's happening, you might say, on a week-by-week basis. And then the next one, please Pam. Now this is an interesting shot, it's a supposition. See the toe of the sand dune where it was on the beach, the red dotted line? The next dotted line at the top of the erosion is where it left in September last year. That's 38 metres at the top of the sand dune that we've lost inland. If nothing happens and those sand sausages are not in place in time and we go through another winter, not a special winter but a winter like last year, then push 38 metres inland and there's the line of possible erosion. Heading downhill, it's into the backyards of those properties. And in the middle, you can see the dark green foliage of the trees. Well, those trees of course will topple. So that's the risk that we're running at the moment. To have the installation of the sand dunes delayed any further is a risk. I can't put a dollar figure on it, just at the moment I understand that there's $500,000 to $600,000 to install those sand sausages. If you miss the boat and don't get them in, it becomes millions, anybody's guess what it might be. It's a risk you just shouldn't take. My urge to you is to, at the end of this day, however the process works, or perhaps this week, somebody needs to have made a selection of a contractor, asked for urgency of that contractor and just asked him to get on with it immediately. You've got to get that machinery on the beach and the preparations work underway this month, this month of April. I believe on a secondary matter that the extent of the sand sausages is some 200 metres. That will stop short of that eroded crescent. It certainly needs another 100 to 150 metres of sand sausage to satisfactorily protect the area that's most prone to the ongoing erosion. And my second suggestion is that the same person gets on the phone, the manufacturer, and orders another 100 to 150 metres that will go on at the end of that. That's all I hope to achieve today, just to draw your attention to how serious it is becoming and how serious it would be to go into winter with that scenario unsolved because you've missed the tide.
Thank you, Mr Brown. You're happy to take questions? Councillors, are there any questions? Councillor Moore.
Yeah, look, I think it's a very interesting presentation and I am trusting of staff that they will do what they've said they'll do. I did have one concern, Mr Wiggery that's over there, Lyndon, spoke to us recently, slightly off topic, on the dog control bylaw and he talked about at the time that there was plans for no Reno mattresses now. Could you just briefly tell me what they were going to do and does that concern you at this stage?
My understanding, and it's come straight from Richard Saunders, so it's as accurate as it can be, is that the Reno mattresses are further up the beach as you get towards the sports grounds. He indicated at that stage that the Reno mattresses aren't off the agenda. They're postponed until council can deal with the most urgent and the most significant erosion. In other words, all effort goes into solving part A and I believe part B will be then to carry on with the Reno mattresses. That might mean perhaps at the end of this current winter. You'd have to double-check that with Richard, that's my understanding.
Further questions councillor, councillor Moore?
Bill, can you just elaborate on why only 100 to 150 metres? Why wouldn't you encourage the council to go further and maybe 200 to 250 on additional barriers?
If we could go back to the slide please that showed the extent of the ocean beach domain. Ah, there. My estimate again, another 100 to 150 metres would take you out of the neck of the triangle where the erosion has indicated it's most serious and would take you to the beginning of, I think it's the soccer fields, the first of the playing fields. I don't know precisely the extent of the rubbish tip but I'm guessing that it's probably where the playing fields are. That will take you into the beginning of those playing fields and hopefully the protection of any further rubbish coming out. But more importantly, you're into the thickened part of the triangle. You've covered all of the residential property and if the erosion did carry on then at least you've got a significantly stronger backstop of land, albeit playing field, that can cope with a bit. 200 metres would be even better because you would protect a greater area of that rubbish tip.
And you, in the picture you showed with the red lines, from September through to recently, there hadn't been that much of a change but then with the spring tide last week, I guess that was an impact, or the autumn tide?
Only the area by the path that I indicated with the past hanging. That's been measurable, there's certainly new erosion there. At the top of the eroded lip, there's been a little but I would describe that as natural wind blowing, just what's going to come down in the normal course of events anyway. That's not a concern but this pathway erosion, shall we call it, because it's at the tight end of the triangle, yes, that's concerning.
Is Richard there?
No, it's Brian.
Through to CEO, is there a chance of speeding this up?
Just email Richard to us.
Councillor Thompson.
Can I just clarify because I may have misunderstood. When you were talking about the distance that the sausages currently projected to go to, you said, or at least I thought you said, that it wouldn't cover the crescent, which I took to mean the, if you like, the section between Haggas Crescent ironically and Kennedy Street sort of roughly, is that what you were talking about?
Yes, it is, yes.
In the document that we got sent, I just wondered whether there's a confusion here, I'm not sure where it lies, but the document that we got sent over the weekend shows the sausages going down essentially to Kennedy Street if you take a direct line across, is that your understanding or do you have a different understanding?
No, that's my understanding, 200 metres. But the crescent of erosion, shall we call it, extends beyond that 200 metres.
Okay.
Jenny just showed me a moment ago that site plan and it's quite clear on that site plan that the northernmost edge... and it's quite clear on that site plan that the northernmost edge of the erosion is beyond the end of the 200 metres of new sand sausage.
Okay, that's fine, I just wanted to clarify, my understanding was the same.
Councillor Wilson.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I just want to get some clarity unintended consequences and I don't want to give science of this too much, but just checking the reason for the 200 metres as opposed to 300 or 350. Is it possible that that's to provide an area that the sea can actually get to to restore sand? And I'm just concerned that the answer sometimes isn't to put a barrier up to an area to leave some action to deposit sand.
I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, but I'm just wondering, and I can't recall the Docantale report because it's sometimes, since I've read it. But the problem may be that actually you need to have an area that it can, while this takes the momentum out of the waves, but it provides an area that the sand can actually rehabilitate to as well. If that were the case, would you be happy that it was only 200 metres?
No, it wouldn't, wouldn't. My understanding, and it keeps coming up in these reports and council notes and discussions about the end wall effect, it's there all the time. And the end wall effect is, shall we say, the swirling of the wave and surge at the end of the wall. The sand sausage becomes the wall, so the circular motion and further erosion will occur at the end of that, which happens to be still into the face of the erosion from last year. If that's postponed further north by further sand sausages, that erosion will occur in a thicker part of the triangle. It's a bit easier to accept that risk than the one at the narrowest point.
Can I just ask another question? So, I understand that, so when I look at the, as they say on our pictures, the extent of the erosion, which goes further north than the sand sausage, and you look at the map with the paths, the paths have actually been eaten away from that area as well?
Yes, completely.
That is, I just wanted to understand that, thank you.
Yeah, just another question, Bill, I was just thinking, but I think we all do appreciate that this is a problem. But one day when I came and visited you, you made the comment that it wasn't uncommon for sand to disappear from the beach for a period of time and then come back and that in fact you'd seen that many times at your time at St. Clair.
Yes.
Do you believe, while I don't expect that the trees are going to be magically replanted by the sea and the dunes to their height, is it potentially possible that we could get a northerly storm or something that could bring quite a lot of the sand back? Is that a possibility? Like, have you seen that before?
Yes, I have. It's not even a phenomenon, it's a regular occurrence. It's occurring more and more regularly and it seems the end result is that there's more sand stripped away than returned in the two-and-fro process. And again, just listening to, people know a lot more about it than I do, the effects of the change in the wave and the water pattern off the sea wall, I think has quite a large effect on the movement of that sand. Yeah, I'm only repeating what I hear from other folk on that respect, yeah. It's this area in here that I've been able to measure and monitor on a day-by-day basis that I can speak with some knowledge.
Thank you. Councillor McTavish.
Yeah, I just was wondering, Bill, whether in your conversations with the parks manager, you've raised the concern about the extent of sand sausage and if so, what the response was.
I haven't had that conversation with Richard yet, though.
Thank you.
Further questions, councillors? Mr. Brown, thank you very much for your observation. I suspect you will be hearing...
Thank you.
Okay, councillors, we move on to...
Just in terms of the two presentations, Mr. Chairman, I'm wondering if we could decide what our responses to them. It seems to me that the first one, the outbreak of the submitters have been invited to and may well submit as part of their annual plan, and that's fine. But I wonder if it wouldn't be good idea to ask Mr. Saunders to respond to that submission and so that conversation does happen and we can then be informed of the result.
Yes, I think it would be appropriate for Mr. Saunders to do this, but not necessarily here. I suggest that it would be best for him to consolidate what we've been presented with today. But given that the submission was essentially about it, the need for urgency, I think that the response from Mr. Saunders should be within the next few days, if that's possible.